City Council Meeting is called forward at the time 6:00 P. M. Before you begin, council, please put away your cell phones if you've got personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you're participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. Before we begin tonight, I would like to introduce to you Angela Long. Angela, if you'd please stand. She is our new interim chief of the City of Wasilla. So, welcome aboard. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Vlach.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor. All council members are present. We have, except for councilmembers Vlach and Harvey, who are participating telephonically.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilwoman Brown, if you would, leave.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. I'd like to note the following changes. Item 6.2, salary survey findings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting on January 10th, 2022. Item 8.1.2, November 22nd, 2021, regular meeting minutes will be rescheduled to a future meeting. Item 11.2.2, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on November 10th, 2021, will not be rescheduled. The meeting was canceled due to the lack of a quorum. Item 14.1, executive session on the Shaw property will be rescheduled to the January 24th, 2022, regular meeting to coincide with an update on the wastewater pilot study or at a future meeting in which the pilot study will be presented. Are there any additional changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
I'd like to move 8.2.2 to mute business, please. Yes.
Are there any other changes? Is their objection to the agenda as amended? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. There are no special orders of the day. We are at commission and agencies reports. We'll begin with a report from Joy Mariner on BDO USA on the fiscal year 2021 annual financial audit, followed by a report from Wasilla High School Student Representative.
Hi, everyone, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for the introduction. So, I'll go ahead and give the update on the audit report for the 2021 financial statements. My name's Joy Mariner. I'm the Office Managing Partner of BDO in Anchorage. I've been with our office for about 20 years, many of you recognize, and have worked with before. And I serve as the lead engagement partner on the audit of the City of Wasilla. So, I've worked with the City of Wasilla for many years, on and off. You may have seen Sam Thompson. Last year, he moved into a position with our national office, a technical position, so that's exciting, and he sends his regards. And I also have with me the senior on your engagement, Daisy Crozier, who's here with me in the back, and she served as the lead on the audit and the field work and supervising the staff here in the field. She lives here, just five minutes away, in Wasilla. And I'll draw on her knowledge if you have any very specific questions about the audit process. But we were here, I came out with the team as well, and we were here back, I guess, in September. The audit was issued in November. This may be the first time in many years we've been able to do that because there were no external factors, if you can believe it, that prevented us from being able to issue in a very timely manner. Your team has always been very well-prepared, and they were prepared and mature for the audit. But I do want to go through the results of the audit with you as a city council. So, you should have two documents with you. One is the annual comprehensive financial report, the big-looking one. Maybe you have three documents, actually. You also have a single audit report. And then the last document that you have is the audit wrap-up, which is our required communication to the city council. So, I'm going to start with the audit wrap-up, and that's going to be the, I guess, most exciting part of the report, although it's rather boring in the sense that, as usual, your team was prepared and the audit went very smoothly. This was a very difficult and unusual year in a lot of respects for the financial statements of the city. But let's turn with me, if you would, to page 5 of the audit wrap-up, where we go through the status of the audit. So, I just, before we even start with that, I do just want to note that I am an independent auditor, so I'm hired by the city council, actually. Technically, I work for you and for the public. We're an independent accounting firm. We do not, we have no ownership in the city. The city has no influence over our own opinion. And so, it's really important to me that this presentation is interactive. If you have specific questions, things that you want to ask of me as the independent auditor, I'll do my very best to answer them. The status of the audit, the audit was complete and issued on November 24th. That's on the third bullet point there. We did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements this year, which is what you, as the city council, should want to see as a result. The fourth bullet point is related to our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So, what you might not realize is you actually have three different audits going on. We have the, technically, the four. You have the audit of the financial statements, a government auditing standards audit, which is required if you have more than $750,000 of federal or state financial assistance. And then the uniform guidance or state single audit, which is the actual compliance with your grants and contracts underneath the federal or state awards. So, we did not identify any items to report to you under government auditing standards. We look into compliance with laws and regulations, labor law, your insurance requirements, workers' compensation. We inquire with the Human Rights Commission, for example. We look to make sure you're submitting your payroll taxes and your PERS payments on time, those kinds of things, and no issues there. And then in the fifth bullet point, you can see that we did issue an unmodified opinion on the city's single audit report and the federal schedule, and that was also released at the same time. Not surprisingly, in your single audit, we did audit your COVID money, the CARES Act money that you received this year, as well as the airport improvement program. So, no findings in either of those programs to report to you. The last bullet point I'll just touch on, as usual, management team here, they worked very well with our team. And I would just say that this year, and we'll look at the numbers, but the numbers sort of speak for themselves, to have no audit findings when you had a seriously large number of funds running through your city, your team stepped up this year. It was a difficult year to be in city finance, statewide, nationwide, probably worldwide, although I don't have insight into that. But I will say that there are a lot of transactions that happened this year that were unusual in nature, new grant programs that were established, new funding streams that were received, and we did not identify any issues with any of those tests that we performed or compliance requirements that we audited. So, just congratulations to your team on that. Page 6, under results, so we do need to kind of just overall let you know if there were any significant changes to the financials. No big changes this year, otherwise. You did adopt a few minor accounting principles this year, which had very minimal impact in your financials. And you do have some estimates in the statements, so not every dollar that you see on here is a hard and fast dollar. Typically speaking, the city has very collectible accounts. People pay their bills, so you have very little allowance, in fact, no allowance recorded for doubtful accounts, meaning people are expected to pay their bills as you move forward. And then your pension liabilities are estimated by the State of Alaska actuaries, so you have no influence over that number. It's a big number, but it's lower than it was last year, if that helps. And then you do have a parcel of land that's still held for resale, and that's included in your financials. The other one that's not listed here because it doesn't impact your fund level statements, but it is an estimate, is your depreciation of your assets. So, for example, this building or the different types of buildings that you own in the city, equipment, cars, those kinds of things, are depreciated over an estimated useful life, and that estimate is based on industry standards. So, it's really not an estimate that your team can manipulate easily or anything like that. No big changes this year to any of those estimates. The State of Alaska estimate did decrease largely because of the performance of investment funds. That's really what influenced that the most, because those went up. So, the value in their funds went up, and so the liability went down. Page 7, we'll discuss with you some of the big changes on the financial statements and how they look. I'll cover a few highlights when we get to the statements. And then on page 8, one thing that we do report is whether we identified any audit adjustments or uncorrected misstatements, things that we identified that your team chose not to correct. No audit adjustments identified this year. Your team is calling us, emailing us throughout the year when things are unsure. Joy, what do you think we should do with this? You know, Sam, can you help us with this entry? And we do assist with your pension adjustments because they are quite complex, and they come from the state rather late. So, we did assist with those adjustments, but those aren't errors. Those are really just technical assistance that, we appreciate that your team's proactive so that the financials you're getting throughout the year are accurate. And we don't opine on those. We don't go through all of the statements you get in the city council meetings, but we do look to see if there were major unusual adjustments happening at the end of the year, and nothing unusual that we found. The last page I'll cover in here is on page 10, and this is just related to internal control. So, let's just take a step back for a moment and talk about internal controls because internal controls start here at the council level. You being here today and talking with me about the audit report is an internal control process. Monitoring the financial health of your city is a good, important internal control. And also setting the tone here that you want to receive financial information, that you're going to review it, that you'll ask questions of your management team throughout the year. And I know you're going through the budgetary process right now, and that's a very important part of that. I'd like to see the involvement of the city council members in the budget and discussion about how that's going to be used because so much of that derives what actually happens in the future. So, that's always really important for me to see. So, we look at internal controls pretty closely. What controls do you have in place to make sure the financial statements are right? Who's checking the bank reconciliations? Who's signing the checks before they go out the door? How are those things being checked before they get reported to you in the financial statements? We look at the key controls. Are they operating during the year? Are they designed properly? And then we report to you anything we find that maybe would, something we think you should take action on. They require your involvement in correction. We didn't identify internal control deficiencies that we believe you need to take action on. And then we do discuss things with management. So, for example, if we identify, hey, this might be a more efficient way to do something, or especially as it relates to the IT system, this is a kind of an added level of security maybe you could add, we would give those recommendations to them, but we would only bring things to you that we believe that you need to merit your attention, essentially. So, no major items to report here, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And that comes out of having a clean financial statement audit overall. We found a lot of adjustments and errors throughout the year in all of our test work. That would be indicative of a poor control system. And the only other thing I'll say is that it's important to have a good mix in your internal controls between preventive controls and detective controls. So, you want to prevent an error from ever happening in the first place, right? But you also want to have a way of finding them after the fact if they did occur. So, we look at both those preventive and those detective controls. Preventive controls are always better, and they're always more expensive. So, there's always a balance to have between the two different types of controls. Also included in here are other required communications. If we had found any issues, fraud, abuse, difficulties, disagreements, significant related party transactions, we would report to you those as well as part of the audit wrap-up. Nothing very exciting to report there, which is exactly what you would want to hear. Questions on the audit wrap-up before we go on to the annual comprehensive financial report? I realize that's a lot of information all at once.
Ms. Mariner, you, sorry about that. Ms. Mariner, you mentioned a couple of changes in accounting procedures that had minor impact. Was that a minor negative, impact, negative impact to our net position, firmly neutral?
So, that's a great question. This year, none of the standards changed your financial position in any way. The two standards this year were GASB 84 related to fiduciary funds, so we did look to see if the city manages any money on behalf of any other organization, and there were no significant items noted there. So, a lot of cities do that, actually. A lot of cities have fiduciary funds where they're running some kind of funds for nonprofits or community foundations, those kinds of things, and you don't have those. And then the other standard change this year was GASB 90 related to kind of investments in equity type of investments. So, if you owned a portion of a business or something like that. So, we did look through your investments, and nothing like that. You have pretty standard investment holdings this year, so neither of those impacted your financial statements in a major way. You technically did adopt them this year, but they really had no impact on your statements.
Thank you.
Excellent question. So, let's turn now to the annual comprehensive financial report. I promise not to read the whole thing. So, you'll notice this year, the technical names swapped. It used to be comprehensive annual financial report, now it's annual comprehensive financial report, just to make it really exciting for you all to pay attention. We changed it up a bit. But this ACFER, I guess we'll call it now, an ACFER, is at large, and there's a lot in here. And actually, there's certain information presented in here that's a best practice by the Government Financial Officers Association. It's a national organization, and they say, well, best practice financial report has all of these elements in it. And you actually receive a certificate of achievement in financial reporting from GFOWA because of the way that you've presented this information. So, this gets submitted to GFOWA, and they review it, and then you get this beautiful certificate. This is your certificate from last year. It's included in this packet. So, that's one way that you can see that your team here really goes above and beyond to make sure your financial statements are clearly presented and have good information for the public. So, for those of you listening online or in the room, there's excellent information in here, and I'm going to cover just the very tip of the iceberg portion of it. But let's look at the table of contents so you can see the types of things that you can find in the ACFER, because I think that's going to be helpful for you as council members and community members to know what kind of information you can find. The introductory section really just has a letter of transmittal, just describes your city, what you do, what kinds of things that you offer your citizens, lists the city officials, an org chart of all of the positions here, or the majority of the positions, as well as your certificate of achievement. Then you have the financial section, and I'm going to cover a few highlights. The auditor's report, which contains that unmodified auditor's opinion. A management discussion analysis, and that is like an annual report. So, if you just want to see what changed from last year to this year, what are those fluctuations, it's a good place to find some soundbites and to find some explanations for what's happening. It also tells you what your major capital projects were, for example. So, this is a really good resource for you. It's only 10 or 11 pages long. Good read. The next section are your basic financial statements. I'm going to cover a few of those in a moment. And then there's additional information on the required supplementary information and the supplementary information. That gives you a whole lot more detail on all of your funds, your pensions, and you may not want to go through all of that today. I wouldn't expect you to. I'm not planning to. It's a good resource, and it's a permanent record. This is something that's going to be here at the city for probably at least 30 years, maybe longer, and a reference for you. So, if you want to go back and see, okay, what happened in water over the last 10 years, you can go back to these financial statements and pull out what happened in water for the last 10 years. So, I really encourage you to just familiarize yourself with the information contained there because I think it's really useful. Takes your team a lot of time to put it together, and it does provide a historical record for you. And the last section of the table of contents is the statistical section. This is perhaps my favorite. I don't audit it, which is maybe why I like it so much, but also because it has great information about your principal taxpayers, the levy that you have, and also a 10-year history of a lot of financial information. So, you can look back there and see how much was spent on public safety over the last 10 years, for example. But also has full-time employees by function, some capital asset statistics. So, I think the statistics, if I were sitting on, behind the desk where you are, would maybe be the most useful section for me. So, let's touch on a couple of highlights, and I'm going to flip to page 18. Give me a moment to get there. I don't get one of the fancy spiral-bound ones. My evolution here. So, the statement of net position is going to show you on June 30th, 2021, what you had in assets. Those are things that you own here at the city, what you had in liabilities, things that you owed to others, and then what's left over is called net position. So, the major areas of assets here at the city are primarily in capital assets and in cash and investments. You can see that. You can't turn around and sell your capital assets tomorrow. Some of them you could, but it would make it hard to function as a city if you sold the majority of your assets. So, the capital assets are really kind of tied up in a sense. And your cash and investments are for various purposes. You have about 63 million total at the city in cash and investments, a lot of which is designated for specific purposes or even restricted for certain, for certain purposes as well. Liabilities, things that you owe to others. You have a very small debt load here at the city, and I know that's something that you've worked really hard to accomplish over the years. You do have your, you know, largest category of liabilities is a net pension liability, which you cannot pay off. You are part of a multi-employer plan with the State of Alaska, so you could pay $15 million in, but then it would distribute that benefit to every employer in the state, so it doesn't benefit you proportionate to the amount you put in. And you still only contribute at your 22% contribution rate. That has not changed at this point. And that plan is really just underfunded at the statewide level. You notice, though, that the other post-employment benefit liability is almost zero this year. So, that, the healthcare portion of the PERS system has recovered and is actually reporting an asset this year of 1.3 million. So, it's kind of flipped where it's not a liability anymore, it's actually an asset in the PERS OPEP system overall.
Ms. Mariner, when we're looking at net pension liability, you know, you have governmental activities and business-type activities. Could you explain to me what the $2.3 million roughly in non, or business-type activities, non-governmental activities would be in that category?
Absolutely. So, the net pension liability is spread between your different funds and the water sewer funds. There's a little bit in municipal airport, but also in the sports center. All of them receive an allocated prorated share of that based on their full-time equivalent employees.
So, they're considered business-type activities. Thank you.
Yep. So, water, sewer, airport, and the sports center are the four business-type activities that you report. And that's all based on estimated payroll, essentially, allocated prorated based on payroll.
So, you would call those particular business-type activities sort of enterprise businesses? Is that correct?
And in fact, you do call them enterprise funds.
I want to get my terms straight.
It's very strange. So, up here, they call it a business-type activity, but when we look at the fund, it's called an enterprise fund.
Yeah.
So, I think enterprise fund probably makes more sense. But there are certain other things that sometimes get put into business-type activities besides enterprise funds, and that's why they have that distinction.
My thinking was just enterprise, and I was just trying to correlate the data or the words, that's all.
In your case, they are equivalent because there are no other business-type activities. So, let's look and dive in a little bit more, actually, before I move on, I'll just mention that your net position, what's left over, your equity, 131 million of it is tied up in capital assets, but you do have a capital, sorry, net position that's unrestricted of about 46 million. I don't want to focus on that number because, keep in mind, that includes the net pension liability effect and some of these other things that are more out of your control. So, I want to look at a fund level at that net position, and you can find that on page 20. We're also going to look at the enterprise funds, so we'll see that in a couple more pages. When you look at your governmental funds, the three large governmental funds that we report as major funds are the general fund, this year the CARES Act fund, and the miscellaneous capital projects fund, which is where most of your capital activity runs through. And I won't spend much time on this just to say that I do want you to pay attention to the fund balance number because the fund balance matters a whole lot. You're not carrying fund balance in CARES, essentially, as you earn a dollar or as you spend a dollar, you earn a dollar. CARES doesn't need to carry fund balance. Any money that you received in advance that had not been spent yet is actually reported as a liability until it's spent. So, that, that fund does not carry fund balance. You do have capital improvements in the miscellaneous capital project fund that are 3.5 million that's already been designated by you as the council into that capital project funds. And then the fund balance in the general fund is really broken out into different types of categories. You have what's committed under your capital budget for capital improvements, as well as certain things that are assigned for the land bank or for your compensated absences, that's accrued leave or PTO. And then 9.8 million in unassigned fine balance in the general fund. That's about 10 months of activity, a little bit less than that depending on the year. This year, a lot of your public safety expenses were coded to COVID, so it's actually a little bit less than that. I think it's important to keep in mind that your general fund is your operating fund, and you do need to have enough fund balance in your operating fund to weather storms, which I've been saying for quite a lot of time, when we finally have had the storm of the century, right, hopefully, to where having that fund balance in the general fund was really important to have when you needed it. And it's also your working capital. You don't always get paid upfront for your grants. You sometimes have to pay your vendors before you've received reimbursement or before the money comes in the door. So, having a good working capital fund balance is very important, and it's something a lot of my councils pay a lot of attention to. Do we need six months? Do we need nine months? Do we need two years? Really varies. I would say six months is very low. Most of my clients and most of what I kind of steer clients towards is a much higher number than that. It really just depends on what you feel comfortable with in terms of your cash flow and whether or not you have, in your case, you don't have debt payments to make, so that helps. So, you have some more ability to manage your cash flow in that respect.
Ms. Mariner, relative to the prior year where COVID was not, or was just an emerging issue at that point and didn't really have any effect on the city just yet, how has that unbalance been affected by COVID? I mean, so we need money to weather the storm. In this case, we didn't use any of that money. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on how you look at it, I guess, is maybe the better way to look at it. So, when you look at the CARES Act fund, there's a significant portion of the CARES Act fund that was, in prior years, would have been charged to the general fund related to the police, fire, police primarily, that's going into that fund. So, the police charges or the public safety charges that would have been covered otherwise by the general fund are being reported in that other column, in the CARES Act column. So, for example, the total amount spent on public safety has actually increased, and I don't have last year's statements here, but a large portion of that would have been expensed in the general fund had COVID never happened. Instead, it was charged against the CARES Act special revenue.
Which, which in turn would leave us with a higher balance, a higher, you know, safety cushion, so to speak.
And it definitely did. When you look at your fund balance at the end of the year, it's 36.4 million this year. It was 24.2 million last year. So, about $12 million increase overall. That's after transfers. So, the general fund has always historically funded capital as well as funded some of your enterprise funds that don't break even, but this year you did have an extra $12 million fall to your fund balance at the end of the year. Now, it remains to be seen what will happen with 2022 and '23, and so having a bigger cushion, I think, is a really wise move. Not everybody in the state took that approach. A lot of people didn't. So, I think that's a wise way to go, but it's not really up to me to decide what the amount should be. It's more a matter of taking a look at it and making sure you feel comfortable as a council with what that unassigned is. And that's where, I mean, you look at the 36 million, it's a little bit deceptive because you have committed a 24.4 of that as a council already for capital improvements. So, really, that number that's kind of unassigned and available for working capital is just under 10 million, it's 9.85 million.
Thank you.
So, let's just briefly look at page 22. I think that's what I was alluding to. This shows you the changes for the year in those major funds, the general fund. The general fund, increase of fifteen point six million, revenue of twenty-six point seven. And the CARES money of almost eleven million. You actually got a grant, I think it was more like fourteen and a half or something like that. But the rest of it was being spent in two thousand twenty-two, this fall. And a large portion of the expenditures were distributed out to the community in terms of, forms of grants, as well as covering some of the additional costs that the city experienced as a result of COVID and also covering certain public safety costs. So total public safety across the entire city did increase as a result of COVID last year. And then about a portion of that, which would have typically been covered by the general fund, was paid for with CARES.
Ms. Mayor, if I may back up one page.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, I'm on page twenty-one, exhibit B two. The one, two, three, the fourth paragraph down there says the PERS ODD, other post-employment benefits. Could you spell out ODD for me?
Yeah. So there's three PERS OPEB plans. They're footnoted, so if you really want to read the footnote, we certainly can look at it in a very high level. But there's actually three health-related plans. And that's the occupational disability plan. And I can't exactly remember what it stands for, Occupational Death and Disability Plan. So that one plan is actually funded in excess. That's the one plan that's overfunded in the entire state. There's four because there's the pension plan and then the three OPEB plans. And that one plan is overfunded by one point one five million. Your portion of the over.
Our portion of that. And is our other municipalities, cities, government agencies overfunded?
Everybody is.
Same way. Thank you.
The entire plan is, at least right now. We'll see what the market does here in the next year. But yes, right now, that, that entire plan is overfunded. Good question. So the other num, let's look at page twenty-three briefly. And I don't, I want to be respectful of your time. But page twenty-three is an important page for really one aspect that I think is important, is when we look at your depreciation versus your capital outlay. This shows you the difference between the amount of the depreciation of your assets over the course of the year and the amount you invested in new capital, new, new buildings, new infrastructure, those kinds of things. I watch this closely because it will show kind of how well you're doing at replacing your capital as it depreciates over time, as it's being used. And I am happy to see that the capital outlay did exceed your depreciation this year. That's not always the case. But it does show that you're investing in, in your city's future. You do want to watch that number because if you start just depreciating assets and never work to replace them, you end up having to do a catch-up at the end of the day to kind of rehabilitate your infrastructure. So that's an important number to watch. And I look pretty, pretty closely at the happenings in your capital budgets to make sure that there's a plan for replacement over time. And then let's look, the last page I want to cover on the financials is on page twenty-five. This is your question about, actually twenty-four and twenty-five, question about the enterprise funds. These are your utilities, the airport and the sports center. They do, they also do not carry any debt. You do have a small note payable in the water utility, actually, so correction there. Very small, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar note payable in the water utility. I think at the end of the year, it's four sixty, four, almost five hundred thousand. Believe that that one is only at like a one point five percent rate. So that's not a bad rate. I, that's one of the DEC loans. So I recommend my clients get as many of those as they're eligible for. The federal government likes to forgive those, so I like those just as a tool because it's one point five percent interest and they sometimes get forgiven. But let's look at the next page, page twenty-six and twenty-seven because this is really the one thing I just want to point out, that these utilities still are operating at a loss. Keep in mind that a significant portion of the expenses are depreciation. So that's not cash leaving the door. And if you look at page twenty-seven, you can see that first subtotal is the cash flow from our operations. Water and sewer are both generating cash from their operations. The airport and the sports center are not. And you are subsidizing those with transfers. So it's just something to be aware of and to be watching out for. I've mentioned it before. But the, sports center had a rough year. Hopefully, we don't have another rough year like that. I, this is the first year in twenty years I haven't been in the sports center for a wrestling tournament. So I'm glad to be back this year and hopefully those fees recover. But it's just something to watch. You can't have an enterprise fund that over time just loses you money. But you are doing significant subsidies essentially to keep those two funds operating over the course of the year. And that's the main statements that I wanted to cover. I'll just let you know that if you do have specific questions about the statements as you review in your own time, please reach out to your management team. If there's something that you want to reach out to me about, you are welcome to do that. I do work for you as the council. Certainly best to go through the mayor or through the finance director first. But if there's other questions I can answer, I'd be happy to do that. And I've already covered the results of the single audit. That's the other packet that you have. But there is a detail in here of all the federal awards that you received. Eleven point four million dollars this year was spent in the city of Wasilla on federal awards. That's mostly made up of the ten point nine million in the COVID response fund, the CRF money that was audited. And, you know, the only last thing I'll say is that CRF money was a bear. It was a beast and it was changing every day. It seemed like, you know, I would get a call from your team, Joy, are we allowed to do this? Are we allowed to do that? And, and then next week, the treasury would come out with a different rule. And it was very interesting, the whole process. So we're just really impressed by the way they were conservative and they were careful with that money. And they made sure that they followed all the compliance rules, which were quite intense. I think there were forty pages in that FAQ. And they did a good job monitoring those and keeping up with those requirements. So with that, I'll just thank you for your time, answer any other questions you have, and congratulate your team again for a successful year.
Council members, any other questions? And now Wasilla High School student representative. Please state your name, and you've got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Agnes Emrock, and I am here tonight representing Wasilla High School Student Body. We have an exciting month at Warrior Nation. Drama students on the Christmas, Christmas carols for elementary and middle school students. They also had public showings the weekend of December fourth. They did a wonderful job and we are so proud of them. Jazz band students went on a tour to seven different locations in the valley, including Wasilla, Wasilla area senior center. One of their residents stepped up as a guest conductor, which brought smiles to all parties. If you missed our talented Warriors this holiday season, don't fret. Tonight at seven PM, our guitar class has their recital in the theater. And Tuesday at seven PM, our piano class is hosting their recital in the Commons. We would love to see you there. This past weekend, our wrestlers competed at regionals. Many of them making it to the state wrestling tournament, taking place this weekend at Alaska Airlines Center. Basketball is well underway with many upcoming games. I encourage you to check out our website for games, game updates and times. We are in our final week of the semester, and I speak for myself and my fellow students when I say we are looking forward to a well-deserved winter break. I want to thank you for your time and dedication to our community. Merry Christmas and Happy New Years from everyone at the Warrior Nation.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Agnes. That was great. Quick question. I mean, looking at the end of this semester here versus the end of the prior semester, which would have been, you know, summer, how much has COVID impacted you personally as far as your ability to learn this semester versus the prior semester? And if you don't want to answer that question, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. I mean, are things lightening up to make it easier, a better learning environment for you this semester?
Yeah. In eighth grade, I didn't really do my schoolwork and I slacked off. This year, I'm doing better and sitting on top of my grades, trying to at least.
Well, congratulations. That's great to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at public participation. There are four public hearings this evening. And Madam Clerk, please read the title of the first public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven, providing an opportunity for review and public comment pursuant to Wasilla Municipal Code three ninety oh eighty-five C on the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Wasilla and the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association and providing for the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association and the city of Wasilla to enter into negotiations for a new contract and authorizing the administration to begin contract negotiations.
The public hearing on resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. And seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven?
Madam Mayor, I move resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Leonard to adopt resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on adoption of resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution serial number twenty-one twenty-seven passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan, Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlock, and Harvey in support.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the second public hearing.
Thank you. That's ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget by accepting and appropriating six thousand dollars from the Alaska State Library Institute of Museum and Library Services, ARPA federal funding for the poor purchasing materials for a storytime walk around the library and materials to add to the library's collection.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown moved to adopt twenty-one twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second, thank you. Councilman Johnson.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three.
Thank you. Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-three passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan, Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, and Vlock and Harvey in support.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the third public hearing.
Thank you. That's ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-four, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget by accepting and appropriating a federal aviation administration grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars as part of the American Rescue Plan Act two thousand twenty-one for Wasilla Airport operations.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-four is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-four?
Councilman Johnson moves to adopt twenty-one twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Leonard to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-four. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could we get an overview of what these funds will be utilized for, for the airport, please?
Bob?
To the air to help with the letter. Primarily, this will be the operation funds, which we look at and we like to gain the power to make it operational. It is the majority of the, I think that'll be about three months, right there.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on adoption of ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-four.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one twenty-four passes unanimously. Councilmembers Sullivan, Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlock, and Harvey in support.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the fourth and final public hearing.
Thank you. That's ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-five, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget by appropriating fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance for contracting traffic control services in support of the two thousand twenty-two Iron Dog snowmobile race being run from the Menard Center.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-five is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-five?
I move ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-five. This is Councilmember Sullivan Leonard.
Is there a second?
Councilman Brown, second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Brown to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-one twenty-five. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Leonard?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question from yourself or staff. This wasn't in the original budget, so why was this brought forward then for, for funding?
Scott, do you want to take that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan Leonard. This is an event that has not been at the Menard Sports Center in the past other than what we had pre-COVID. We were hosting their tech inspection, inspection and then draw night. This time, again, this is part, also will be public works. But this year, they're going to do the inspection, their draw event, the start, the finish, and the awards banquet. So it's a comprehensive all-collective because in the past, they did not start, which did not create the traffic control issue. So from there, it's public works has been handling that part of the traffic side.
Thank you. And that's fantastic. So what else is the city involved with regarding the Iron Dog besides the, the security aspect? Anything else? I mean, I'm just curious.
I think we're doing everything possible with everything in the Iron Dog other than running the snow machines ourselves. But on any traffic, things like that, I mean, again, basically the whole event now is centered at the Menard Center.
Okay. Sorry, follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
How many are you expected then to be in attendance to this event? It's usually a pretty big deal, I understand.
Yes. Tech inspection is just the racers. So throughout that day, will probably be one to two hundred people. The evening draw, you can anticipate two to three hundred people. The start, they've projected potentially a thousand to fifteen hundred plus. The finish is unknown, maybe two to five hundred. And then the awards evening, probably again, three, four hundred people.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We're very, very excited to have you.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Graham and then? Mr. Graham and then Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with the, you know, the $15,000, essentially we're working through public works for traffic control, are we anticipating additional public safety expenses on the police department side? I don't know if the new chief can look at that yet or if somebody has looked at that, but I mean, if we're...
Mr. Graham, this is her first day.
She should know then. She's in all day.
Councilmember Graham, right now, we've been working on, again, what they're using, where they're using it through the permit process. Then we started addressing medical and security plans, of which we haven't received anything additional yet at this time.
Okay, so we would be logical to assume that we could see future requests for funding for the public safety side later on?
Maybe, you know, right now, this is all the unknown. This is the first time. And we have used... What we come up with this number was, this is what it cost us for the parade. Am I correct?
To the mayor, this was a quote for independent traffic control at three major locations where the races are going to run through, right there in Clapp, at Vine, and foothills, if I recall correctly, from the March discussions. So it was an independent quote because our services, if we had a still event, my guys could cover it, crew could. So we had them independent to help out, to provide those services here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Brown, do you have any?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So out of this 15,000, the third party is going to be responsible for their permits and all the contracts and the people and everything, so it won't cost the city any additional resources.
To the mayor, Councilman Brown, yes, that is correct. It's independent, and then you all be permitting and hold life.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman. So this is a new item that's coming out of the budget, and it's a new expense. Do we have any anticipation of funds coming in to offset the $15,000 that we're expending on this event?
To the mayor, Councilmember Johnson. The event, so as you know, we are the enterprise system, so the activities that occur at the Menard Sports Center have certain set pricing. The Iron Dog package right now, for all the things that they requested, is approximately $11,000 to $12,000, of which they receive some nonprofit discount. And then additionally, the MTA, who is a sponsor of the Menard Sports Center, and they have advertising, they have an annual budget of $7,500 that they can spend using the Menard Sports Center. And so they are supporting the Iron Dog with their $7,500 in sponsorship, leaving approximately, I think, it's $3,400 coming into the Menard Sports Center. None of that covers any of this expense.
And if I could, Scott, look at the people it's going to bring into the city. And they're going to buy gas, they're going to buy food, they're going to stay in hotels. It's an economic driver, so it's a win as far as I'm concerned. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, James.
I feel like it's kind of been answered a little bit, but I just kind of wanted... I was wondering, how often do we pay $15,000 for private events? I'm just curious why it's something the Iron Dog is taking on.
Where did you get the 50,000?
15,000.
Oh, sorry. I understood 50, and I'm like, where'd that come from? We pay the same people that's doing the traffic control. We pay them for the Fourth of July parade. Does anybody else know of anything else? And again, like the Fourth of July parade, look at the people it brings to town. It's an economic driver. So is the Iron Dog. Hopefully, it'll just get bigger and better every year and bring more people.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to this by any means. I was just curious if it's something that we regularly do, if it's kind of a new thing. We pay for the traffic for the parade, but that's kind of, that's a City of Wasilla event. So I was just curious if it was a new thing for doing it for a private organization.
Bob, do you want to answer?
So by extending the race here, there was an unforeseen cost for the Iron Dog when they discovered they had these crossings that we could not help them internally. So when we reached out for the private traffic control quote, it was kind of a shock. So we decided we were trying to build out this year, and hopefully next year they'll continue to get sponsors to offset that cost.
It's all about building the city. Come to Wasilla.
I agree. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 2125.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Vlock?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2125 passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlock, and Harvey in support.
Okay. We are on to persons to be heard. Mr. Sterns? You will have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sterns. I'm the Senior Ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. Just as a reminder, we have a new phone number. It's 206-8800. Our website is www.wasillaseniors.com. So Christmas time, okay? The next 14 days are going to be very, very busy for us at Wasilla. So here's what's going on. On Friday of this week, we're going to take a little field trip to Mid Valley, and we're going to have an open house there. We own that now. That's our little thing. And, but the people in the community haven't or don't really know that it's there. I'm not sure exactly what it is. They're going to have an open house, and hopefully the people in the community will come and see what we're all about. And so that's going to be on Friday at Mid Valley, 1:00 to 3:00. You're all welcome to attend. There'll be food. That always draws people. All right, so the big thing that's happening between now and Friday is our Christmas blanket drive. We are trying to collect as many blankets as we can by Friday, two, plus hats and gloves and socks and pet treats for our seniors. Now, most of the time when I'm behind this mic, we're talking about miles for meals or... And we're trying to get money for the meal program here. This time, we're going to do something specifically for the senior person, okay? Because on Wednesday of next week, the 22nd, we are going to have bags for each of the seniors that are at the location that day, and we're going to give them something. It'll probably have a blanket in it and then some other little goodies. And so what we're trying to do now is collect those goodies so we can put them in those bags and have something for everybody. But it doesn't, it's not just the people on site. It's also all the people that we serve with the Meals on Wheels, okay? Every one of those people are going to get a bag, and they're going to get their meals on the 21st and 22nd. We're going to be going out and doing this, and they'll get their four meals for the whole weekend. And that should be about 1,100 meals. Our guys are going to be very, very busy, but we're giving them four days off after that, so. Anyway, any questions?
Of course.
Mr. Sterns?
Yes?
When you say blankets, would this be for their beds or more like a throw? Like when they're watching TV or...
It could be, it could be either one. Most of the time, it's just a blanket to wrap around, wrap around themselves, a smaller blanket. But it can be any kind of blanket you want. If you've got a blanket and you want to give it, we'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sterns, could you give us a little word on pilot forward, how that event went?
Oh, I thought we did that last time. Marlene came by and shared all that information, and it was very successful. It garnered more than we had anticipated, and so it was very successful. But because she was here last time, I don't have all the statistics because I didn't bring them this time.
I just wanted to confirm that it was a step up from last year, so.
Yes, it definitely was a step up. Everybody did a great job, and I'm sure a lot of people are a lot fatter because of all the great podcasts they gave over the holidays. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Okay, now we are on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read title of the items under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have items for approval under our consent agenda this evening are the special meeting minutes of November 10th, 2021. At this point in time, we have one introduction with the recommended public hearing of January 10th, 2022. That's Ordinance Serial Number 2201, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $300,000 from the general fund fund balance to support the operations of Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated, Wyhouse Youth Center, and the Vista Row Senior Housing. One resolution up for approval, that's Resolution Serial Number 2131, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by transferring funds within the general fund in the amount of $50,000 for legal expenditures to negotiate the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association contract. And lastly, one AM for approval, AM number 2149, acceptance of the City of Wasilla's fiscal year 2021 annual comprehensive financial report for public record.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Graham?
Yes.
When we looked at revising the agenda, I had asked to pull 8.3.1. It looks like 8.2.2 was pulled instead. Is that correct? So there's two...
I'm sorry, Mr. Graham. I... When did you want to pull? 8.2.2 is what I thought we were pulling the ordinance.
8.3.1 was what I had asked. So could we revise the consent agenda to include 8.2.2 and pull 8.3.1?
Yes. No objection from the body. So if I may then, under introductions this evening, we had Ordinance Serial Number 2201, which I read into the record. We're also going to have Ordinance Serial Number 2202, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by accepting and appropriating $1,950 from the Alaska State Library Institute of Museum and Library Services, ARPA federal funding for purchasing collections, storage materials for the Wasilla Museum Oral History Collections, and off-site backup. And then we have the AM that we're also approving, and we will move Resolution Serial Number 2131 to new business for further discussion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Johnson.
Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are now at unfinished business. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the IM.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's IM number 2114. That's our draft code of ethics review and discussion. This is continuing discussion that was held on November 8th and November 22nd.
Is there a motion to enter the committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor? Yes. I move that we move to the committee of the whole, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Graham to enter into the committee of the whole. Is there objection? Hearing none, we are in the committee of the whole at 7:06. Okay. Holly?
So I'll jump in and get us started, and then we can... One of the things that I did was I took your comments from both the last two meetings and tried to consolidate and get a concept of where we were, excuse me, where council wanted to go, and we also circled back with Councilmember Brown. Just to let you all know, the clerk was not available at this time, and we really wanted to make sure we pulled her into the process. So we'll have to, you know, there'll be some additional work. But I was hoping to give us a construct that will move us quickly. And so one of the things I noted was, it seemed council members as a whole were very supportive of the concept of the code of ethics and doctrine for Wasilla. But there were some questions regarding some of the finer things. So with that understood, I thought I'd go through what I think are the most substantial challenges or concerns where I've heard a lot of debate from council. Identify those as questions, and then we can have a discussion regarding those. And then we can also come back at the next meeting and the next work, committee of the whole, and we will put those questions up and move through them once each council member has had a chance to really digest them, and then also think through if there's something I'm missing. So I certainly didn't intend to truncate the discussion at all, but I was hoping to keep us moving forward. So on that note, I'm going to run through the questions, and then I will stop talking, and maybe we can work through each one of them, and I can get your thoughts. Although before I do that, I do want to check in if there's anyone who has any objections to this approach or wants to recommend a different approach.
Does anybody have any objections to the way Holly's doing this? Continue, Holly.
So what I heard, I mean, we heard the overall support for a code of ethics. We started to run into some questions when we got to numbers. The first place, the first question that I have noted is the definition of substantial financial interest and what numbers trigger a financial interest. We had questions regarding structure, whether or not we wanted to use something that was more proportional. I tried to find examples of that type of model and could not find anything that I could choose over the long term because of the ambiguities, but I will develop that more. If this is one of the questions council wants to sort of keep on the table when we have that next discussion, I will bring those examples so we can discuss them if that's a... But I'm going to give you your numbers. We talked about the use of the court-mandated balancing test, which looks at what is a substantial financial interest, and it looks at things like what motivates a reasonable person to make a decision. What, how significant is this interest? And how close in time is this interest to the particular council member? And more specifically, so these are, I'm just going to read them. Whether the financial interest is a substantial part of consideration, whether the financial interest will be significantly impacted or changed by the outcome of the decision... by the outcome of the decision that the city official is making, whether the financial interest is immediate and known, and that's really that timing component, and whether a reasonable person would consider the financial interest significant. So those factors are laid out by the court. That's what they are going to look at. No matter what number council puts in this, they will always do that analysis. So the code doesn't always protect us against an allegation by the court that there was a conflict of interest. But it certainly helps, and especially when you have it encompassed in that Code of Ethics, which is usually a little bit more developed than just a single provision. So right now, what you have is $1,000 per transaction or $5,000 in the aggregate. The first question I think we need to put up on the board, aside from the purpose and intent, which we'll revisit as well, is is that enough? Is that too much? Is that comfortable? Is that something that council feels good about? So that's question one. All right, so moving on. The next question is the definition of immediate family. The immediate family is currently defined in your code as a spouse, parent, uncle, aunt, sibling, spouse's parent or sibling, child, including stepchild or adopted child, and anyone who lives in a person's household. This is a definition we see in many updated codes. But I see a lot that include uncle, aunt, and a lot that do not. So that is, I think, really understanding. I mean, when we are in a small community, one of the things, the purpose of this code as proposed by Councilmember Brown is designed to be realistic, to hold council members, commission members, the city attorney and the clerk accountable, but to do it in a way that doesn't interfere with enterprise and community relationships, and is realistic about what that looks like, how you serve. And for that reason, I do think, and I pulled this, I called this from what you were saying about other provisions. But I thought this is one the council's probably want to think about just so that those definitions reflect that reality. So that's question two. Question three is the gratuities question. That came up last time. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard just really, I think, asked that open question of we accept meals of $150 in value. Is that what council really wants to do? Is that the amount we want to see there? Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of it was we were looking at the state members and saying this is actually pretty high when we compare it to the state. And so I think we need to get this question, you know, sort of on the board, so to speak, and really think about, is that number what you want to see? And what came from that, a few council members, when we started talking about gratuities, we're also talking about the difference of gifts and when we have an occasional gift or a regular gift in those relationships. And so it really gets into, this is a pretty detailed, it's on page 306 of your packet. We have a pretty detailed definition of gratuities and also a lot of exceptions. And that was designed, again, to fit within that reality of how you navigate. To do it in a way that's comfortable, that encourages people to not only run for council, but also to sit on commissions and boards. And so that is sort of what we were thinking. So I just pay attention to that language, and that will be one of the questions on the board. The next, Jamie, what am I on? Four?
Four.
Four, okay. Question number four is, this is really about the advisory opinion process. And we talked about, we think we do this code, an advisory opinion process so that any elected or any city official subject to this code has something to protect them. So that if they're acting in good faith, but they're not sure, there is a very easy, in writing yet informal process where they can say, hey, I really need you to give me advice on this. And then they can use that advice as a complete defense to any challenge. And so I wanted you all to just take a look at that. We'll put the language up on the board next time to make sure that we walk through it. But there were some questions on how binding that would be, what the process would be. And so we want to make sure that everyone's aware of that protection and that the provisions look, they reflect what council thinks is enough protection and not too much protection. I mean, maybe that's something council wants to step back a little bit, or they want to change the. We currently have it in a way that the city attorney grants the, you know, gets those requests for opinion and then issues the, issues a decision that can be used as a defense. And we just want to make sure that that's all in line with what council wants to see. The next, the next question, or really, this one's really just a, well, it's a question. The question is, we have very strict disclosure provisions for the ethics complaint process. If you disclose a confidential complaint, it is immediately dismissed. We find that you have, or when I say we, if the hearing officer finds that you have disclosed a complaint and that, you know, that was during the period of pending investigation, you're done. It's done. You can't, another person could bring, another, you know, another individual could bring a complaint, a separate complaint, but you have lost the ability to bring a complaint on that issue. This is designed to ensure maximum confidentiality so that in the event you have someone who is maybe bringing complaints against a city official that aren't wanted, that aren't based in the code or just are not in good faith, that there is, that those complaints stay confidential. Because in the event the hearing officer finds that they have no bases, they will, they are closed, and they will not see the light of day, and they remain confidential forever. So that's important. We thought that was important for this balance of protecting not just the city officials that are in this room tonight, obviously, you know. But we're really, a lot of thought went into, I think Councilmember Brown was really focused on your commission and board members especially. And in some ways, your city clerk, because she is an employee, you know. And so making sure that those protections are there. We understand that council members maybe don't need those protections as much or are willing to withstand the threat. But that's, the concept was these protections are in place to, for those appointments, to really get those seats filled. Councilmember Brown, is that, I just don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, let me right on.
Okay, all right. So that was, but that's a lot of protection. That's more than you will see in a lot of ethics provisions. There are other cities in Alaska who have gone this far for the same reasons, I believe. The other, the other, okay, so the next question goes to sanctions. I think we really had some healthy debate on what sanctions make sense for Wasilla and how far we want the authority of a hearing officer to go when it comes to sanctions. So what I have noted here is, one, how much of a civil fine per violation is a fine that council feels comfortable with? Do you want something at $100, $300, $500? Or what we have here is $1,000, which is consistent with your other code violations. And so, but you have a general penalty provision, which we can just mirror that. So we have, you know, or you can go lower. And for violation, one of the things to note is if you have a violation that's reoccurring, you could have a daily violation, right? So that's the other thing. One violation could be, so that's something else we could, we have not distinguished that here. But we could, and you could have multiple counts. That's, you know, so that's a discussion to be had. If there's a civil fine, how much is that civil fine? Is it enough for the fine just to be, these are provisions in the code? And if they're violated, that's the fine? And then we don't want to go any further than that. The other question that really came up, and I think people were very nervous about, is if we're removing appointed of a commission or board member, having a hearing officer do that and not a body of the city, that seemed to be a real point of contention for some. And so we want to make sure we get that on the board and that we march through these sanctions together and that we have, you know, sanctions that really work for everybody. I think that the other thing is, these are areas that you can stand, you know. Or, so we'll put that up there, we'll march through them. I think the other one that I heard discussions on is, should the hearing officer's determination be a recommendation? Because it is presented as recommendations in a way, right? Because they're recommending, for example, to the body that it sanction, or that it give a public. They're, you know, so they're letting out findings that are direct, they are direct findings. They are making a decision and telling, and deciding what the remedies are. But some of those remedies require action by the board on which a commission member sits, that require action by, say, the employer of the city clerk, that will have ramifications for the city attorney. And so the other thing that I noted when I was going through this is, I have not seen a Code of Ethics that applies to the city attorney before. And it made me think that we really need to consider remedies that are meaningful towards the city attorney. For example, I'm subject to a, I, this position, city attorneys are licensed. And that means we're subject to ethics and rules that are specific to us. And there is an ethics complaint process with the Alaska Bar Association. So I am reaching out to the Bar Association to see if there is a way to tie in a decision by a hearing officer on a city Code of Ethics violation with their procedure. So it sort of streamlines it in, and there are real consequences for anyone sitting in this seat. So that's just, that's something that kind of came up. So we'll explore that. And then the next question is the limitation period. We had a lot of discussion on what does that mean, when does it end? And right now, this is actually very protective of the public, right? It's designed to give them maximum, give them the ability to bring a violation of someone that took place while that person was in their role as city official. It allows them to bring that action within one year of their, of, I'm sorry. It allows them to bring it within five years after the date of the alleged violation. And I really heard sort of a resounding, that is a lot of time to be wondering if you're subject. So I even see, and I see, for the record, lots of shaking heads. So I think that that number we need to revisit. But the question is, how long? You know, and then the other question that dovetails into this one, right? So if we drop that one down to, say, a year, that gives them, you know, a year to bring a complaint, or six months, you know, six months after the conduct. The question is, what if they don't discover it? What if they discover the conduct later? Do you want that right now? We have that, we allow them to do it one year after the discovery. So again, do you want to just kind of say, look, you have six months after the end of a term or the end of service, and, or six months of discovery within the first year? If it's within the first year, if they don't discover. Or do you want to just say, nope, you have six months, or you have a year? And now all of those are okay, you know. But it's a decision, that's a really important decision because that really may influence how people see the Code of Ethics, how they feel about being subject to it. And it also limits the public's recourse. So you want to make sure we have that answered, I think. Okay, that was my list. That was my, what I pulled from our discussion. And I'm hoping that this is a great time for council to say, oh, you forgot this, or add this to the list. But next time, we'll start marching through the questions, unless we have any objection to that process. That's Holly.
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, I had a very interesting conversation with my nephew, who's a managing partner of a law firm in Minnesota, who went through a Code of Ethics with the City of Rochester, Minnesota. It was a fairly large city. And we, I discussed the timing point of the thing, which is really what I had brought up and one of my concerns. And he, his advice is this. He said that if your term is very long, it brings up the opportunity for people to do ax-grinding to former employees, particular, or council people who then are maybe going to another office and can, by the very nature of the allegation, because we're in a society where you're guilty if you're alleged. Okay, so you really end up with, in his opinion, he ended up fighting cases for people who were maybe on the city council, and then all of a sudden became the mayor. Somebody had an axe against the mayor, so they went back 10 years or five years and then started to complain, well, you did this when you were in the mayor. And it really became a mudslinging thing. So his recommendation is to make your situation clean, short, but yet to protect the population. And if you make it real long, you end up with the situation where it can actually be used against people. My comment.
Mayor, I think that is, I'm glad that you said that because I really reflected what I was hearing from the council members as a whole last time. The one point I will make is, and the, we also have to remember our confidence, the confidentiality piece in this code would not, and that's sort of just the other, it sort of dovetails into this issue. It is designed to stop that, you know. Because if they do that, their claim is immediately dismissed and found without value, and they're done. Because they're sharing, until you get an actual violation, right? There should be no discussion. Nobody actually even knows of the complaint, not the board, or commission, or council, except for the city clerk, the city attorney, hearing officers, and the individuals involved in the complaint process. And so that is just, but you're, but I see your point, which is.
So the thing would be then, on a complaint, if the complaint is filed in confidence with no social media involved or without any public notice given. In other words, if somebody wants to come and say, I'm going to file a complaint, so they bring it to the clerk's attention, okay, and then they go and they post this on Facebook. I did this.
That is done.
Okay, at that point, I mean, the rule should be, you just, you just.
Absolutely.
You just eliminated that particular thing. It has to be confidential in order to make it a valid complaint in public notice or publishing or social media or Twitter or any of the other electronic media announcing this as a smear campaign should eliminate the thing, even if it's valid.
I think that was Councilmember Brown's position as well. And that is why this is written, it is gone, like it expressly says here, it'll be dismissed. You can't bring it back, you know. So it's, and that seems harsh, and it's not designed to eliminate protections for the public because this is a very comprehensive process. But it mandates that confidentiality you're worried about.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Brown?
To address that, we spent a lot of time on the statement of purpose. Thanks, everybody. As you read this, every so often, go back to the statement of purpose. And there's two things that, one, show you where the rest of this come from and how we are protected and what we've done to accomplish. But along with this is also educating the public. Code of Ethics has to be assimilated among the public so they know what rights they have, but also know what is expected of them. Not a one-way street, it's not for us to be ethical, it's for both sides to be. And education meaning we both know what's going on. We know what the parameters are. We know what the left and right boundaries are. And if we are both acting to the best of our ability to be ethical, and the public are doing the same thing, then we should not get this smear campaigns. And the public will know that if I go to social media, or go to the news, or go to the PTA and discuss this, what the ramifications of that is. I think that education, and again, go back and read the purpose statement. I think that education, and again, go back and read the purpose statement, I think you will see this whole purpose, you know, is to give the public confidence, but also to protect us from undue critical analysis also. So, I just encourage you to constantly go back and read that purpose statement, and to, if you want to add or delete something from that. But that's where we spend a lot of time, making sure that we understood what we was trying to do for the public and for elected and appointed positions. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. So, I agree that you do need to try and protect appointed and elected positions, but hearing from an attorney that we need to limit free speech to do that, I don't think is appropriate. If you've ever been through the grand jury process, you know, essentially, you get one side of the story presented to the grand jury, and they decide, yeah, there's reasonable cause to move forward with this, and then, and then the prosecutor will then file charges, which are, you know, innocent until proven guilty, but oftentimes, you'll see a notice from the police department, or whatever, saying, hey, you know, this guy's been arrested for littering on the sidewalk. If you've ever seen him litter on the sidewalk, please come forward and do this. So, for, for us to say that you can't talk about it, I don't think is reasonable. I think what Mr. Johnson brought forward, just limit that time period, you know, to the six months, or whatever, you know, get it out, get it done, get it over with, I think is better. But I, I think limiting the ability of a complainant to find additional witnesses or corroboration, I don't think is appropriate. It sucks that in today's world, smear campaigns are the way it is, but, it is the way it is, but free speech is a protected right, not a privilege.
I just want to respond to that, because I feel very strongly about this, but so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond, I am, it is, free speech is absolutely essential to protect. There's no way compromises that. And so, and I certainly would not support it if it did. In fact, though, I do think the harm that could come, because this process does not have the same types of hurdles and protections that, say, a court process would have, the filing fee, and then all of these steps you have to go through to bring litigation. So, if I brought, for example, a complaint against somebody because of their conduct, I have to prove a violation at a much higher standard, I have to show a criminal or civil violation, and then I'm on the hook for fees, unless I can show that I'm bringing it for a public, a constitutional litigant's purpose. But otherwise, if I am bringing an action against somebody, or something that is not a constitutional violation, right, just something that I think was bad conduct, I have risk in that game. I have, I am bringing charges that if I lose, I have to pay, right? The ethics complaint process proposed here is designed to be accessible by the public. And so, every single person who brings a complaint, if that complaint is found valid and issued, will have the opportunity to speak freely about the complaint that they filed. But until that time, this creates a confidentiality that you see in almost, I mean, it's very common in code of ethics, because the damage and the dangers of somebody making, I mean, I'm sure every council member can imagine the most egregious, most, you know, harmful allegation that could be made against you, that is completely false. And how damaging that is, if that complaint, if that's filed, is that an ethics complaint and publicized while it's pending, how dangerous that is, of a, you know, that tool that you're handling. So, I, you know, I, whether or not counsel, you know, if you decide you do not want a confidential process, that is lawful, and I certainly can draft that for you in a way that will be upheld under the law. But I do think that it's, I don't want you to fear that, one, having a confidential process is a violation of the Constitution, or, two, that they won't have an opportunity to be heard. So, it's lawful, I don't want to suggest it isn't, but it's, it's definitely scary.
Well, I'm pretty sure I didn't hear you say that access to the courts was limited, whereas access to this process would be unlimited. And access to the court was limited by the fee, and by paying the fee, you then have skin in the game, and some liability, you know, towards covering the cost, court costs, or the legal fees. I would, personally, would feel more comfortable, if you want to file an ethics complaint, great, you pay a filing fee, and if your complaint is dismissed, then you may be on the hook for the, the fees the city paid for the hearing officer. Wouldn't that be the same as the court process?
We can put that in our questions.
Well, that wasn't the question, the question was...
No, I mean, I think we could add that one, we could add that one to our questions, because we haven't talked about, you know, there are some code of ethics that require a filing fee, and require fees to be paid if they, if they do not prevail. That is, that is worth discussing, I think. And we have not put that in, in part because we have created a process that has that confidentiality component, and has a preliminary review component to make sure that we're really looking at substantive complaints. But that is an option. So, I can include that, when we're talking about remedies, I will add in that discussion about, you know, fees and recovery.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Yearning none, is there a motion and a second to exit committee of the hold?
So moved by Councilman Johnson.
Second. Councilmember sold on that.
Is there objection? Yearning none, we are now out of the committee of the hold. Is there any direction or action the council would like to take? If so, the process has got to be made in a motion. Yearning none, we are on to new business. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the resolutions.
Thank you. First item under new business this evening is resolution serial number 2132, authorizing the purchase of COVID-19 antigen test kits in the amount of $595,515.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution serial number 2132?
Madam Mayor, I move resolution serial number 2132.
Is there a second?
Councilman Brown, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Brown to adopt resolution serial number 2132, is their discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson?
I believe that this is not a very good use of public money. There's no such thing as free money in this society. Money is taken from people by government, and in this case, given back to the people by other governments. With that respect, I have two objections to this particular resolution. Number one, I'm going to state it on a technical grounds, and number two, I'm going to state it on a philosophic grounds. Technically, the antigen test basically will give you a positive result after several days of the body's infection. That's known, it's posted on science, you can look it up on almost any website that you wish. If a person is sick, they need to go to the doctor, because the doctor is the one who can prescribe treatment and do the specific treatments, which will actually help a COVID patient recover a lot faster. So, doing it at home gives you actually little benefit. Not only that, if you really look at the antigen test, it is the least accurate of all of the tests given out there. It has a significantly high false positive rate, and no one really knows what its false negative rate is, because it's very difficult to test. So, I ask then, if we're going to spend this kind of money, that is a half a million dollars, we're putting out a very poor test, all right? Philosophically, I found it very interesting that Dr. Joseph Lattapool, I'm not spending his, spelling his name, or saying his name correctly, he's currently the surgeon general of Florida. He has made this following statement, "We must take the health policy decisions rooted in data, not in fear." The testing that we are providing with this amendment does not prevent the infection. Very good, if you test positive, you already have the, the infection. So, you ask yourself, well, if I already have it, why do I want to test? Nor does it provide a treatment for the infection. If I test positive, I still have to go to treatment. So, the only thing that we're really doing with this is providing a continual hysteria over the COVID infection. Now, I say hysteria, and everybody goes, oh, what does that word mean? Let's look at the word hysteria. Hysteria is an unusual fear for something that they cannot control. Let me think. I'm proposing that you test something, and you can't control whether you actually get it or not. So, all I'm doing now is perpetuating the fear of it. Now, I have gotten my vaccine, both doses. I also got COVID. It's not a fun disease. I've known people who have died from it. It is a terrible disease. But spending this half a million dollars is neither going to protect the person individually, society, or is it going to prevent their death? So, I'm very much opposed to this. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Tim, or Councilman Johnson, for your comments there, but I, but I am going to have to disagree in a very strong manner. Number one, the, the tests that we are proposing to distribute here, actually through the Matsui Health Foundation to distribute here, are essentially the instant, you know, home tests, you know, much like a home pregnancy kit, you wait two minutes, find out if you're pregnant. I'm pretty sure I'm not, I'm pretty sure I'm not pregnant, but I don't know that I don't have COVID. So, as, as a parent, and as a businessperson, and as a citizen of the city, I know that people get coughs and colds, I've coughed a couple times here myself tonight, and I didn't say, oh, I don't have COVID every time I coughed. But if, but if, if I'm going to be going into a public setting, and I have a persistent cough, or a persistent runny nose, perhaps like you see kids have all the time, particularly in this wonderful tropical weather that we're having, I would be much more comfortable testing a child or grandchild at home, and seeing a negative result before sending that child to school, or to a church study group, or to a band concert, or, you know, an athletic event. I would feel much more confident about that, being able to do that. And by being able to do that, that would allow me to go to work, and do my job, and be a productive member of society, as opposed to sitting home, waiting three days to find out, you know, if my child, or my friend, or myself, or whomever, has COVID. I agree that there is considerable hysteria surrounding the COVID, but the hysteria is already there. There's nothing, nothing we're going to do is going to, you know, do away with the hysteria, or add to the hysteria, particularly here in Wasilla, we're pretty reasonable folks. But what this does is it helps calm that hysteria by making these kits available to persons that are not medical professionals. It gives them an idea of what to do. If they test positive with one of these home kits, or whatever they're called, I read it, but I can't remember what it says, antigen home test kits, if they test positive with one of these antigen home test kits, it gets them to the point where you said they need to be, go see a doctor, seek qualified treatment to deal with this disease, because it can indeed be serious, and can indeed be fatal, as it has been for folks that you know, and probably that we all know. But by not having this available, I, I think it leads a lot of us to say, well, you know, the kid's got the sniffles, I better keep him home, because if I send him to school, the school's going to call me and make him come home. I don't see anything bad coming out of this. It would be nice if we didn't have to spend this money on these test kits, but this pandemic, or actually, in this case, an endemic, is, has progressed in such a nature that we have to deal with it. And as individuals, we can deal with it, you know, by writing letters to the editor, and talking about how bad Dr. Fauci is, and how false this is, and how false that is. But all that does is, is just create work. What this does is it creates some sense of security, some sense of scientific basis for folks to make a decision about whether they should go to work, go to school, you know, go to a recreational event, go to a restaurant, you know, go look at a construction site, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. So, I, I am very much supportive of this resolution. I do have a question, and unfortunately, I don't see anybody here from Matsui Health Foundation, perhaps the staff can answer this. The last batch of home test kits that the Matsui Health Foundation gave out, they pretty much put in a barrel out in the lobby, and people walked in and got those, picked those up, however many they wanted, nobody asked questions, you just went in and got what you wanted and left from there. This is money from the city, which, you know, is theoretically limited to dispersal amongst city residents. Is there any plan for Matsui Health Foundation to distribute these differently? Does, is anybody aware? Or are we willing to say, you know, anything that, anybody that wanders into Matsui Health Foundation, since it's in the city of Wasilla, is affecting the city of Wasilla?
Good, Mayor, Councilman Graham, so I can't really say specifically that there's a change, but however, Matsui Health understands that it is inside our, our boundaries. They also understand that it's not just about medical providers, say, it's about the businesses, it's about the city of Wasilla as well. And so, in cooperation, as you pointed out, it's this city of Wasilla, dollars for our residents, they also recognize that the city of Wasilla can take part of that distribution as well. So, if you want to, you know, cases or whatever, here at City Hall, and direct someone here, we can do that, if, if we're comfortable, whatever, whatever that might look like. They're open, and it's a cooperation thing, because they have the resources, if you want the hall space of that, providing to providers and getting those out, it's a good fit to get those test kits out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Brown.
Again, I am also in support of this resolution. I think we, as citizens officials, have an obligation to do whatever we can to bring some relief, peace of mind to citizens. We all know that the test is not going to solve the COVID cure it, or give any medical benefits. But if people can make better decisions with this kit, and it brings some peace of mind to our citizen, I think we should do it. And then, a question to the mayor's office, or to the finance, I'm assuming you didn't flip a coin and buy these kits, I'm assuming you got some medical advice from someone before you bought these kits.
I did not consult a physician, or CDC, or that kind of thing. The advice came from, or the recommendation came from Matsui Health, working with, which is their provider, directly with that. And then, the mere fact that we are a municipality, always over the state of Alaska, the same company provides these test kits to the state, to the feds. Thank you.
Ms. Leonard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. I'm looking at the letter from Elizabeth Ripley, president and CEO of Matsui Health Foundation, and she states that the logistics will be coordinated between city and Matsui Health Foundation. Is there a discussion of maybe how... Is there a discussion of maybe having kits at the Menard Center, maybe library, and then City Hall, where it's kind of highly populated traffic coming through those particular public buildings? Then that way the kids can get out to more residents, I guess.
Good mayor to Councilman Sullivan Leonard. Absolutely. That was part of our discussion. And to further let council know that working with Scott Bill and the staff over there at the Menard, they've got enough room over there to receive and store these pallets of test kits. There's approximately seven full pallets that come in. And so from there, it's a, it's a good area for not just the city, but for Matsui Health to load those and get those distributed. Because Matsui Health does have zero space. But absolutely to your question, that would be, that would be.
And through the mayor, and when do we anticipate, if this passes tonight, when do we anticipate that we would get the kits here in Wasilla?
Next week.
Next week. Okay. And then final comments are, when I told my son about this, he scolded me because he works for Capstone and he does the testing. So he says I'm putting him out of business. So he wasn't, wasn't happy with that. However, as a grandmother who has kids in my home all the time, grandchildren, what have you, I'll tell you what, with it being as cold as it has been, I'm sure other grandmothers and mothers and families would certainly benefit from having a kid or two at home as opposed to bundling all the kids in the car, going to Capstone or wherever for testing. The convenience of it is, is good. I'm sorry, I have not seen the statistics on, you know, what the compliance is for these tests or how many positives or negatives or noncompliant in the testing. But, but overall, I think it's a good plan and I appreciate the city moving this forward and I do support it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Velek.
Yes, I also support these home test kits. We actually used one this week at my granddaughter's preschool. One of the workers had tested positive, so they sent home letters to all the parents and such. And my little granddaughter developed cold symptoms about four or five days later. And it was, you know, she wasn't really sick, but she had a runny nose and she'd cough once in a while. So my daughter-in-law purchased one of these antigen kits, gave her the test, it was negative. And then we knew we could send her to preschool the next day and not worry. And we could tell the preschool, yeah, she kind of has a runny nose, but we did test her for COVID and it was negative. So, and like Councilmember Sullivan Leonard stated, you know, she didn't have to bundle the rest of the kids up and take them somewhere and wait in line or anything. It was very handy. It did give us peace of mind that she wasn't going around spreading it to her grandparents and such. So I am in total support too. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, you're the only ones not weighed in.
I fully support this as well.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on adoption of resolution serial number 21-32.
Thank you. Councilmember Velek?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Motion to adopt resolution serial number 2132 passes with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, and I, Mr. Brown?
Say unanimously.
You get a chance.
Yes.
So let's reenact. Motion serial number 2132 passes with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Brown, Velek, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Johnson opposed.
I've rubbed off on.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
Could I ask for a five-minute break?
Yes, sir. Five minutes. We'll be back at eight o'clock.
Get these on order then, so we'll go now with update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
The only thing that we have done as far as COVID-19, we have changed on the mask. It went from recommended but not required in city facilities. That's the only difference. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I noticed the physical protections, the barriers, at least here, have gone away. Have they gone away in other city offices or just here in this?
No, it's citywide. And it's... Troy, you want to weigh in on your department?
Madam Mayor, to council side, from finance, there's still a screen at the counter. We still have the computer on the counter for public use, no longer used because we have two monitors out in the hallway. But it's still, it's still the same as far as finance.
Jamie?
Through the mayor to the council, I think we, we were, you know how we removed them at one time and then we put them back when the pandemic geared up. So I purposely had these made portable, where the offices are a little bit hard to take up and down because they're more stationary. So I'm assuming that that's probably why those are still left in place in case mayor issues, you know, we reach a point where she needs to issue a directive to where masks are then required again and shields are up.
Madam Mayor, have you participated in a discussion with the health folks yet about the Omicron brand? Everything that I'm reading says it's much more transmissible than previous variants of the disease, but has a much less probability of severe infection. Are you... And that's, I got that off the internet, so I know it's true.
You read the same page I did. So Crystal has DHSS, they have a meeting every Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning. Yep, at 9:30. And so they have speculated on what they think they're finding, but they're still have not, exactly what you said, it's not of the same severity as the Delta, much milder symptoms, and they haven't caused us to be alert about it yet. But we'll get an update tomorrow. I would say three quarters of the calls on vaccines and flu recommendations and booster recommendations.
Thank you.
On that page that you and I were reading on, they did say that the Pfizer booster was really effective against this new strain. Like you said, it was on the internet, so you know. And my doctor degrees is hanging at home. So, anyway, moving on. Yes, I am.
Okay. Next item of business, which it's a resolution that was pulled from the consent agenda, resolution serial number 2131, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by transferring funds within the general fund in the amount of $50,000 for legal expenditures to negotiate the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association contract.
Madam Mayor, I move resolution serial 2131.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and segmented by Councilmember Johnson on resolution serial number 2131. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just ask, and probably of Mr. Tankersley here, I don't recall in previous years us having a substantial outlay for legal expenditures during this contract. Even when it was the Teamsters contract and it dragged on and on and on for years, I don't recall us ever having to come up with $50,000 to negotiate. Is this, we're hiring somebody to negotiate the contract for us as opposed to in the past it was pretty much you when you had darker hair? Could, could you perhaps fill me in on that, please?
Sure. Through the mayor to Councilman Graham, actually about six years ago, the city did the same thing. I believe appropriated the same amount of money in the same fashion, vacancy dollars weren't used in healthcare, I believe they did the same. In any case, we're transferring funds of cause from vacancy personnel, so we have an excess budget in these line items that we're transferring over to legal. Administration is requesting the services of our city attorneys to come in and lead that negotiation. As you know, WPDA is what I call the lion's share of the contracts out of the three that we have. It encompasses at least officers of thirty members and thirty-two members over an act. So it's half our workforce. And so with the number of projects and things going on here at the city, and the requirements and basically lack of my resources that's happening, the importance of the negotiations and the process and time it takes, in all fairness to the city, administration's asking for council adoption to provide this importance, allowing the attorneys to come in and spearhead that, doesn't mean that I'm not going to be around or participate, not participate, they're just spearheading making sure that it stays focused and moving forth as, as expediently as possible, so we don't slow this down. I can express with conversations with WPDA, they are very hopeful that for the first time ever that they can have a contract prior to the close of fiscal year. It hasn't happened yet, so they're very hopeful this year that that...
If I may follow up, this would be $50,000 paid to our city attorney or to the firm representing us. Is this a, for $50,000, they're going to negotiate this contract even if it drags on like Teamsters did for a half? Or is this, they're going to spend up to $50,000, then they're going to come back to us and say we need more if appropriate?
Through the mayor to council, absolutely. So this is, this is a $50,000 per string, if you will, per hour basis. When they, if the contract goes long and they expend $50,000, we'll be back at the table, whatever you're asking for. And the last contract that was done six years ago, that was a very long period of time. It was tedious, strenuous, and a lot of work, and we still stayed under that $50,000. It's hard to say, every contract is different, the cycle's different, so you never know going in, the time that it's going to take, but they are, every one of them are important in terms of that time.
I agree 100%. And I'm unfamiliar with the history of your law firm, Ms. Wells, as far as labor negotiation goes. Do you have a team well versed in this?
We do. We have Will Arnhart and Jennifer Alexander. They run our employment and labor group. They do, in fact, they do the labor negotiations for contracts for many communities throughout the state. I believe that it's, it's Rose's negotiating. So this is sort of, this is, or I certainly won't be doing this. This is their concentration and their area. I think that's always been in communication with them.
Thank you, Ms. Ms.
Will Arnhart or Jennifer will be here in my stead on this issue, you know, or calling in, you'll see them in this process.
Thank you.
I believe Will will be the lead on this. Six years ago, Jennifer wasn't the lead on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there further discussion, Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to Troy, can you give me a quick overview on kind of the timeline or in consecutive order, kind of where we're at with the WPDEA with regard to negotiation? And if it hasn't started yet, at one point, then would you bring back a contract for council to have a chance to review and have discussion?
Mayor to Councilman Leonard, so one of that's just speculation, right? So this process has to happen first, and once this is completed and if adopted, then that opens the door for the city and it can sit down and negotiate. That is anticipated to happen in January. That being said, depending on the issues that arise and the time it takes to resolve any and all of those issues, I would, it really is speculative. I've, I've gone through contracts where you think contentious and strenuous and you're extremely surprised and within a month of you're all in council and you're done in your domain. And prior years, some of them become contentious and they drag on for varying reasons. So if, if I, I can hope the WPDA wants a contract, 2130, and these issues can be resolved seamlessly and without issue, you'll probably see these contracts show up around April May at the latest, given time for processes that may change for...
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there further discussion? You're done. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on adoption of resolution serial number 2131.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bealock?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution serial number 2131 passes unanimously with Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Bealock, and Harvey in support.
Okay, there are no items under communications this evening. We are on to audience comments. No one's in the audience, so we are out of audience comments. We are on to mayor clerk attorney and council members' comments. You each have three minutes, so Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, everyone probably got my email about the special meeting next Monday, so I'm assuming everybody can make it. Six o'clock here in council chambers, two resolutions on the agenda dealing with disbursement of CARES funds, and that packet will be published on the 15th. So, thank you for that. Following that special meeting, we have our holiday break, and then we'll meet back here, regular meeting Monday, January 10th. So we also, I don't know if you were aware, we had an appeal filed, animal care and regulation appeal that was filed. Under normal circumstances, under Title 16, when an appeal is filed, the timelines are different. So normally, we come to council and council appoints the hearing officer. We have two hearing officers that you did approve that are in the hearing officer pool. The Alaska Administrative Hearing Officers Group was not available, so we made the decision, I made the decision, we went with Joel Levesque, who has served as hearing officer in animal control cases. So we'll keep you updated on the progress there. And then lastly, I looked into the AML Winter Legislative Conference, which will be February 16th through 18th, it's a Wednesday through a Friday in February, and normally through the budgeting process, we budget for four council members to attend. There will be no group rates with hotels this year. We had budgeted normally $175 per night plus tax. The hotel is $309 plus tax. So that's blowing our budget, that's double. So I think I'm looking for some direction from the body. Do you want to send two members to stay within budget? And if so, who would like to go? And Madam Mayor, you had talked about doing, I don't hope I'm not putting you on the spot, doing some lobbying. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, that's usually when we do our lobbying. And in the past, whenever, you know, people have went and they have a list of appointments and whatever, and they go to the hill and turn around and go back and do whatever. We're down there to lobby, and we're down there to make sure that our representation plus any other that we can get to carry the water for us, so to speak. You might think about, the Baron Office closed is one of the reasons. So the Silver Bow is about the only place to stay. You know, you might think about, I don't know how you instill about doubling up.
I didn't, I didn't, I took delivery. I don't think that's an option. There are, they are going to spread AML out amongst three, I spoke with Portland today. For those of you that don't know Portland, she's the, the conference coordinator. There's some rooms at, was it the Ramada? I mean, it just, it sounds like the Silver Bow is probably...
It's the place.
I would feel comfortable with you staying there, I hope things considered, and that was the 389 plus tax. Even the other hotels aren't budging, so it's, they're a little, maybe a little bit less expensive, but not by much. And then all of the events will be held at Centennial Hall. And I believe, Madam Mayor, you're booked at the Silver Bow.
Clerk, if I may suggest, as you're aware, both myself and Councilmember Bealock are on the board of the Alaska Municipal League, and as the mayor pointed out, this is our big lobbying trip for the year. You know, I, I think we should just come forward with the resolution, you know, making the change in the budget for four persons to attend at the newer rate. I mean, this, this is our one chance to be face to face with representatives that we don't see, because it's the guy from Bethel, it's the guy from Barrow, it's the guy, you know, from Kaktovik, it's who we need to talk to to get on our side to make this happen. And if there's just a couple of us down there, it makes it much harder to spread ourselves out to make that happen.
Through the chair to the council. I think we can probably, why don't I try to transfer some money, play around with the budget, but I think, I wasn't comfortable with that initially because it was double in price, and I thought you guys should be in on that decision. And so this recent upgrade, for instance, of our council chambers, that was, we were able to pay for that with CARES Act funding because of the Zoom component. So I know I have a line item for council equipment, you know, I can probably maneuver, and if at the end of the year, it looks like we're short, then we can come back with the resolution. So...
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Just on that note, you might want to just check to see here at the table who may or may not be interested in going. I don't have an interest in going. I've spent plenty of time in China. And...
So much pressure this year.
But I have a lot of communication still with our legislators, and if I can help just with side projects through phone calls, Zoom or whatever, I will be happy to do that. But at this point in time, save money.
Anybody else assisted in attending? Can I just, Councilmember Bealock or...
She'll be there.
Councilmember Harvey?
I plan to be there.
I would like to attend.
So you got four?
So we have three for sure. Are you, Councilmember Brown, are you interested?
I have to check my agenda.
Okay. So right now, we have a three solid yeses, and I'll work with the rest of the council.
Three and a maybe.
We have Harvey, Graham, and Bealock are confirmed.
Cam, you're a maybe.
He's maybe.
Yeah, I'd go maybe on it. I'd have to check mine and her.
I got a big military exercise due next time, so I may not be available.
Thank you very much, council, for the direction. It's good to be back. I just want to quickly wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, God bless you all. Okay, so that's all I have.
Clerk, if I may, at the last regular meeting of the council, when we did the Zoom thing, we had audio issues, audio difficulties. Those been resolved, it had to do with echo and feedback and...
Yes, thank you. That has been resolved, my understanding that's been resolved. And then at a subsequent meeting, when I was home, the last thing, I tried to tune into a meeting and we were having some audio issues. So that has also been resolved. So as far as I know, I ran in a couple of times, actually during this meeting, checked our stream, everything looks great.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Attorney. Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to this wonderful audience for participating today. It is nice to see so many people here that were here from Wasilla High School, you know, unfortunately, they left before things got really exciting, but it's always good to see young folks involved in what's going on here. And at the last regular meeting, the principal of Wasilla High School came to us with a proposal to change the name of a street. You know, I've had a conversation with the mayor, and I've had another conversation with the principal and said, you know, this really needs to be a high school project. You know, we can kind of give you advice, but this needs to be your project and you need to carry it through. The city council doesn't need to be, you know, doing all the work. The city administration doesn't need to be doing all the work. So hopefully, they will turn forward and find out just exactly what a pain in the patootit is to make something like that happen, but they will continue forward with it anyway and make it happen. I mean, that's, that's the real, that's the real learning opportunity there is to see things as opposed to just saying, well, we want to change the statue in front of the, in front of the high school. So hopefully, we'll hear more back on that and go from there. And also, on the subject of the AML Winter Conference, I really can't express how important that is to the city. And this year, I won't say more than ever, but this year it is critically important as well, as they consider, you know, local control is a huge issue that's sitting on the back burner, waiting not to be moved forward, but to be kicked forward and passed in a minimal amount of time. So we need to be there to, you know, put forward our talking points, talk about options, and make sure that, that our future is protected. This is, this is a really critical time for us to be in Juneau, you know, even if it is $389 a day or whatever. You know, it's really a critical time for us to be there and a critical time for us to be creative and contemplative of what we can do to make things move forward. So I encourage you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Brown, you know, if you're able to be there, you know, let's be there. Let's, let's show up in force. Let's not show up with our words, let's show up with our shoes and, and make things happen there. Happy holidays to everyone. I know not everyone will be at the special session, so happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome back, chief. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank Troy for all of his work that he does, for the security and the financial liability that you have under your wing as, as our CFO. And what a great audit. It's just a testimony to, to you, to the administration, and also to council for setting that direction for how the city is going to go. So kudos to you. Thank you very much. And then Chief, good to see you. Thank you so much for coming on board to help us. A year, maybe two, maybe three, I don't know. One can only hope. Anyway, and that's it for tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Bealock?
I do want to also thank or welcome the new chief. I wish I would sit in person to meet her, but I will be at the special session, I'm not sure if you will or not. Other than that, no comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
No comment.
Councilmember Harvey?
No comment.
Thank you guys for all putting forth the effort to keep this city open for business and moving forward. And Troy, a special thank you to you and your staff, because I'd forgotten something in my office, and so one Sunday, I come trucking in here, and guess who's here? Troy. And I'd been here on Saturday before that, and guess who is here? Troy. And Archie was cleaning out his office. But I appreciate all the work that you do, and, you know, I know, you tell me, no, I can't have, I asked him for a billion dollars this morning and he said no, so I don't get that, but anyway. And Monday night is the special meeting. So Chief Long, thank you so much again for coming on board. I look forward to you moving the department forward. And everybody that won't be here for the special session on Monday, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Don't forget Christmas Friendship Dinner at the 25th, and we have fireworks at 8:00 PM on the 31st. So, a lot of things going on. And we are now at executive session.
Madam Mayor?
Colleen?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that we normally would move to go into executive session, especially with regard to what has been specified here for human contract, but I'm wondering if that's something we should do this evening if we don't have a contract that is being negotiated presently. I mean, the only thing we moved tonight was for funding for attorney fees, so I guess I just have that question. I mean, I don't want to go into executive session if we don't have to, is I guess my statement and question.
Good, Mayor, Councilman Colleen Sullivan Leonard. So the purpose of this executive session, if council wanted it, was if there was any public input, or if council had any questions, concerns, issues that might lead to those items that should be in executive session as opposed to... It gives that, it gives that time. If, if there is no issues from public that we heard or, or council, then certainly executive session at this time is somewhat of a new point. Down the road, executive session will be had again when contract comes up for ratification. Here's a second item. Here's a second item.
What is the consensus of the council?
Madam Mayor, I do have one thing that I would like to bring up in executive session regarding the WPD EA contract.
Okay. Then, Colleen.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to enter executive session for matters of immediate public knowledge which clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city, specifically to discuss the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association. Those present in the executive session will be counsel, Madam Mayor, city clerk, city attorney, police chief and the finance director.
Okay. Motion has been made by Colleen and seconded by Simon.
Oh.
Stu, I'm sorry.
I've been called worse.
(laughing). Step up. Now you've got me sidetracked. Anyway, um.
Any objection?
Any objection to the motion? You're in none. We are in executive session at 8:31.
Councilmembers Harvey and Vee Lock, if I may, if you would disconnect from this and then I will call you from the executive session.
Will do.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you.
James Harvey.
Has left. Nikki Vee Lock. Has left.
Has left.